It's the Joe Padula Show, Clarksville's conversation.
Absolutely. Because the city council of Clarksville, Tennessee, well, they voted yay to purchase the Roxy building for eight hundred to ten thousand dollars, what your taxpayer dollars. So was it the right move? Well, city council member of Ward 12, Trisha Butler, she voted no. And yeah, we'll go over it all now on the Joe Padula Show. Absolutely. Make sure to subscribe, hit that notification bell, click that like, leave your comments, and definitely help us out and share this video. Plus, become a monthly supporter of Free Speech by signing up for the exclusive content, the chats, the merchandise. It's all available at the top of the Joe Padula Show Facebook page. All right, cut that all out of the way. Good. All right, Trish. Councilwoman, sorry. Councilwoman.
You can call me honorable, that's okay.
The honorable Trisha Butler.
I'm just kidding. Trish works.
Pardon me. So, all right, so, uh, last night was a big meeting about, uh, and this wasn't the first meeting of the year.
No.
Because you guys have been meeting a lot, but, uh, but this one has seemed, uh, I think, just on social media alone, getting so many, so many comments back and forth on, uh, no, this is wrong, no, this is right, yay, woo, and boo. Right. Um, let's go to the video. We're going to, uh, display mode here. So, let's start off just by going over the Roxy, because you guys covered a lot of things, and, uh, and how long was it in total? Like, you guys were there for what, six hours?
We were there for six hours last night, and, uh, six hours last Thursday as well.
Damn. All right, so let's see what, uh, Mayor Pitts has to say.
Councilperson Reed will serve as our chaplain of the day. Councilperson Holloman will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
So you guys start off with prayer and the pledge of allegiance every time?
Yep.
If you would please stand.
Does anyone not pray?
Yes, and I actually, they asked me to pray the first time, and I went up and did a whole spiel about how, uh, you know, I think there should be a separation of church and state.
Oh, you were making friends on day one.
I said, and then I said, if you, so if you are not a believer, then just take this as my prayer for you, because I am a Christian.
Uh-huh.
If you'd wish, and councilperson Reed.
Well, what about the, uh, what about the pledge of allegiance?
Amen.
Um, I don't think that anyone, uh...
Anyone not stand for the pledge of allegiance?
No, I don't think anyone has any issue with the pledge. Not that they've vocalized to me.
All right, and, uh, and of course, hey, uh, for those, uh, listening via iHeart Radio or the other listening devices, uh, to check out the visuals that we're looking at, uh, just go to the Joe Padula Show YouTube channel or the Facebook page for the live video feed. Don't forget to hit that like and notification bell, because shadow bands suck.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so we go right into the proposal, uh, the ordinance for the city of Clarksville to purchase the building that the Roxy Regional Theater is in. It is not to purchase the company, Roxy Regional, right?
Well, there is a lease in place currently, um, that I want to say they said they didn't sign it yet.
Okay.
So this particular ordinance was just on purchasing the building.
The building.
Well, the land and the building.
Right. Not the company, per se.
Managing partner, or managing body.
If there's no objections, I'd like to, uh, pull...
This is, uh, Councilman Award One, Richard Garrett, also the, uh, Mayor Pro Tem as well.
He is, yes.
So that's like a vice mayor, right?
Ordinance fifty-four.
If the mayor gets sick or something, you know.
Diarrhea.
Coach.
Oh, whoops.
Why would, why would Mayor Pitts get diarrhea?
He likes, um, fries with sauce on it.
Ooh.
So then this guy would be his number two.
Oh, wow. Oh, God.
That was pretty good.
I can't. I can't. I don't do, I don't do the dad jokes.
That, that was pretty good. You gotta give him that one.
Why do you guys encourage it?
My husband is so excited right now.
Ryan, was that funny? Don't laugh.
I, I shamed Ryan.
That was good.
All right, all right, all right.
All right, back, back to the business at hand.
Oh, my gosh.
Twenty-one and, uh, uh, he was going at the end of the, uh...
Uh, well, Councilman Garrett here, he's asking to postpone this, uh, vote.
No, he's asking to pull it off of, uh, pull it off of the consent agenda. So once we vote on something the first time, it goes on to consent agenda, and it's considered non-controversial. Um, so if it comes around the following month, that's also why it passed this time, because it's two readings for, for things like this. So...
And this is the second reading today?
This is the second, yeah. Actually, let me back up. There was a special session back before we got sworn in, where the old council approved this. It came back up la- last month, and we s- I think it was Jason Knight, uh, moved to postpone it till this month. So this is...
Ward five. Yeah, Councilman Knight, right. All right, so fast forward, okay?
Why go, why go through the, the pain and the hassle and the time of negotiating and talking about a lease if we're not going to purchase the property? So maybe the cart before the horse. So I'm just, I would prefer that we keep it...
The people doing the sign language, are they in the same room as you guys?
They are, they're in the back corner.
They're in the back corner?
Mm-hmm.
And you see them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do you stare?
I don't know where this is going.
No, I'm just asking. I, I, I see it in the corner of the screen, I, I just...
So I have some ADD, and I do get to the point, especially six hours into it, where I like, kind of start looking around. And I don't stare at them, but I do, I do, I mean, I focus on different things.
I want to touch them. You know what I mean?
Why? Now that's weird.
Yeah.
I want to learn.
One of them is actually a Ward 12 resident.
Oh. Yeah, you have two of them, a guy and a girl.
Mm-hmm.
Is, how do they tag team?
I'm not sure. And then sometimes, I, I don't, I'm not sure why they do this either, but sometimes one of them, like, listens and signs to the other one to sign to us. Does that make sense?
No.
It's like telephone.
Okay.
[laughing].
All right, so moving forward.
I think this would be a beneficial purchase for the city to undertake.
Representative, uh, City Councilwoman Streeman?
We know the love that this community has for the Roxy. I have gotten numerous phone calls, emails, as I'm sure many others have, in support of this purchase. There are many people throughout the community that believe having a performing arts center in our downtown would not only continue to help revitalize it, but, uh, continue to give to the community that opportunity to see live theater.
Okay.
So can I say something about that really quick? Um, not that I want to, like, overthrow your show, but...
No, no, I fast forward a lot of this, because there is just so much repetitiveness in these meetings and redundancies.
So I got calls in the, in the week since the last vote. I got calls. Um, only two of them came from my ward. And I check. Everybody that writes me, emails me, calls me, I check.
Who were the other calls from, other wards?
Um, the APSU Theater Department, the entire Roxy Board, um, there are other wards, et cetera, yeah. And it's, I will listen, if you call me, I will listen. But when, but the reason that I checked to see is because I separated out the opinions of the people in my ward, and I put precedence on that, because I'm a representative.
Okay, of Ward 12.
Yeah.
Right.
So I just wanted to take a second to say that, because we did get a ton of calls, but they were not all applicable to my people, so to speak.
Understood, understood.
Thank you, Councilperson Reynolds. Councilperson Knight, you're recognized.
Fast forward those.
Thank you, Mayor.
I know, I wish we could do this at night.
You really should, because it, it's just a lot of, I agree, I agree, and this and this, it's the same thing the other person said, which is fine. Just, just say, I agree, and move forward.
Sometimes we need to make a statement for our people or for the record, and that's cool. Uh, Councilman Reed actually brought up that we are not supposed to, by parliamentary law, speak on something more than twice. So I'm hoping that we implement that.
Right.
I'd like to say that the Roxy is a staple of our community, a landmark of Clarksville, um, and...
I served with him in Strike Brigade, by the way.
I came to Fort Campbell and was actually, I stood in replacement with him. We were both...
Replacement.
He was an E4, and I would have been a private at the time.
Isn't that something?
Yeah.
Pretty much a piece of Clarksville history. I've talked with individuals within my ward, and the majority have been for it. Um, here's an opportunity to keep a piece of Clarksville history here.
Brings up the history stuff, goes into the...
I have an issue with the history argument, too, because they're talking about destroying the whole thing.
Yeah, hold on, hold on. Yeah, we'll get to that part, right.
She's getting so excited about this.
I like this. Watch out, Ryan, you might get another black eye. Okay, be careful.
No, not. Call me Doug.
Great candidate.
Sidewalks and we want roads.
But he does bring up, uh, he says, okay, uh, well, revenue from this could, uh, help build for sidewalks and roads, which is another issue a lot of constituency here in Clarksville bring up. But that's what he says, right?
Here's an opportunity to generate revenue to put towards those...
Generate revenue is the key word.
He said that twice. He...
Those, uh, projects.
I should have fast forwarded it.
I'll be hoping for it.
Councilperson Holloman, you're recognized.
Yes, um, just people around my ward have been, um, the majority of them, a very strong majority, have been in favor of this project. Um, it's in, in, in the works for ten years. Um, and you, you don't really realize...
Yeah, ten years, because...
Oh, I could get mad about that, too. Let me shut up.
Because, uh, what, what do you, what, uh, what Councilman Holloman's talking about is the, uh, McMillan, I believe, Mayor McMillan at the time, it was the, remember the coming soon sign downtown, right? The Performing Arts Center?
What was that, two thousand fourteen?
It looked like they borrowed a sign from, uh, from Epcot Center, you know, Future World, right? It looked great, right?
I was working that clown, uh, no, I was working that, the Delia.
And then all of a sudden, that sign started deteriorating, and nothing happened, right? Nothing happened, except for money going towards, uh, from the city going into the Roxy, right?
That we have an opportunity right now to do something that's really good for the city, good for downtown. It'll encourage growth.
I agree, first and foremost, that advancing Roxy as a business growing would be beneficial to our growing city. Know that about it.
generate revenue. It'll add jobs, and we'll have a building and something that'll last generations.
Well, you gotta, all right.
Councilperson Evans, you are recognized.
Yes, I, uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to, um, state that I'm also, um, a member of the arts community and, um, have always, um, had a passion for the arts and fine arts.
Right, and then she goes on to say...
She's an arts major at APSU, actually.
And I understand that government has in preserving, um, the arts and culture.
She wants to see more people to have exposure to the arts.
Councilperson Butler, you are recognized.
Uh, we gonna watch me?
First and foremost, I want to thank...
I haven't watched this yet.
There is no fast forwarding of this.
Everyone who sent texts, emails, and made phone calls to me, and it was a lot, uh, I'd encourage them to stay involved in their local governan- governance and what goes on here at city council, even when it's not, you know, just about this particular subject. And I told them that in all my replies. I just want to make one thing resoundingly clear. My vote tonight is not against the Roxy. It is a vote for Ward 12.
Now, uh, did the other...
Man, I'm an asshole.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think that. I just, I mean, you put it out there, and you were the first one publicly i- in this council meeting to say no, right? Did, did the other council members know where you stood on this prior to the meeting?
I'm, I'm relatively outspoken, so I'd assume if they pay any attention to, uh, social media, they knew.
Did anyone try and, like, I don't want to say coerce you, but convince you?
Uh, I wouldn't say that, no.
It's a nice green sweater you have, though.
I heard I look good in green.
Thank you, Councilperson Butler. Councilperson Allen, you are recognized.
So, I got a lot of phone calls and everything about the Roxy also. I also had a very enlightening conversation with Mr. Ryan Bowie, and, um, I took some time to think about what he was saying when we had that conversation. A couple of days later, I called him because I had made up my mind. So this is the way my mind is made up.
You gotta get to the point. You gotta get to the point in these meetings, you know? And, uh, and, uh, Councilwoman Allen, I hear you, but get to the point.
I am going to vote to purchase the Roxy today, and that is where it ends. I don't know what the Performing Center looks like, Performing Arts Center looks like, and I don't know exactly what the plans are going to look like and everything like that, and I think we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. I am a supporter of the arts, but we sit here and we talk about an iconic building.
Goes into the history of it all, right.
Well, she spoke at length against it last mon- uh, last week, like, with questions and, you know, so, and, and her, I'm not saying that she changed her mind, but going from that to where she was, she did have an amount of explaining to do.
Mayor, with this, I did more research as well as looked back at my proposal for downtown Clarksville when I ran for city council in twenty fourteen.
It's Councilwoman Smith.
Which suggests I would like to see a huge downtown conference center to bring in revenue to the city.
Councilperson Richmond, you're next on the list.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, is this on?
It is on.
Uh, just a point of clarity for Mr. Baker, perhaps. Um, could you help walk me, walk us through, uh, how the vote here would impact...
Vondell brings up the, uh...
Another area, specifically in reference to the lease agreement.
The leasing, right.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a problem.
A lot of people were uncomfortable with the lease from what they were saying, uh, at last week's.
Right, because wh- when that means is how much will the Roxy pay to be in the owned building of the city?
It goes into, uh, it goes into so much. It goes into who has control over it, um, it goes into how, the fact that they're not paying us but a dollar for the first three years.
Right.
Um, the lease is for twenty-five years, and we re-evaluated every three, and that has to do with, um, profit sharing.
Now, what if the Roxy can't pay its bills? After the, the one dollar, wh- which I think is ridiculous, by the way, and I love the Roxy, don't get me wrong, but a dollar a month?
I'm not sure how they're not going to be able to pay the bills when we give them twenty thousand dollars a month to do it.
And that's another thing that gets brought up, too.
This is authorized, the mayor to go ahead and close on the property.
Blah, 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 yada, yada, so and so forth.
And Councilperson Little, you are recognized.
Ah, the one and only.
Love him.
It's the best.
I do like, I do like Little.
The littlest of fast voting.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for clarifying a lot of that.
And no tie. No tie.
And he's, and he's unbuttoned.
Okay.
Business casual.
He's sexy.
Yeah.
Um...
His hair is always on point, too.
Uh-huh.
He does that himself.
Also, they were very proactive and everything. Uh, people love the Roxy. I love the Roxy. And really, honestly, when I think about Clarksville, one of the main things that pops into my head is the Roxy. I am on board with purchasing the property. I do have some concerns about the lease.
Again, the lease.
Yep.
It keeps getting brought up, but yes, we, we're okay with purchasing this, but we got some questions. Why wasn't the leasing settled before the actual vote of the purchasing?
They tried to do that.
Right.
Um, Councilman Garrett tried to pull that up first. He said, this affects how I vote on this, and they said it was putting the cart before the horse.
See, I, I find that interesting, that...
It's a, it's a sign it before you read it thing is almost how it felt.
I hear you.
It's not the same, but that's how, that was the feeling I was getting.
And I understand doing the vote first also, because if we vote no, there's no point for the leasing, but you're leaving that up for chance.
Right. But the reason why they have so many problems, because the lease is the issue.
Right.
So if they don't clarify or give details on the lease, that affects how people's going to vote.
Allen, one more time.
I'm sorry. Um, I wanted to say, and I want to be very clear in this, but theater is, that's not just what performing arts are.
She brings up diversity of arts.
I'm a dancer, and I've heard theater so much, I'm like, what about dance?
Yes, I would love to see some dancing going on in there.
Oh, here we go.
No, 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 no.
Interpretable dancing?
What about visual arts? What about technology, technological arts?
But yeah, I, I agree with that, too. I mean, uh...
That's not the Roxy's focus right now.
Right.
That's for, that's for the Performing Arts Center.
Right.
And they are having issues with that, because until we build the Performing Arts Center, the Roxy is going, I assume, to continue focusing on what they focus on.
And that's what they, that's what they've always focused on.
Theater, they do, um, uh, wedding receptions, and, um, they, you know, they do schools, they do all kinds of stuff in there. That's part of the reason that they wanted to build bigger, because it's too small for everything that they're trying to do right now.
Bringing science, arts, and the whole bit.
But they're not doing anything right now because of COVID.
Right.
Councilperson Garrett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's just, I, I have some grave concerns with the way that our lease is structured.
You've got all the lease parts.
The lease, the lease, the lease, the lease, the lease.
The lease is under...
Which is why it should have been addressed.
I, I really, and I understand that there was conversation before, this conversation of should we buy the building? The conversation of, well, should we talk about the lease first, was, was the first debate of all this, but it was voted no, we're just going to move forward. No, it wasn't even a vote, it was just, it was asked to be...
It was requested.
Right.
He requested, and we voted...
And the request was denied.
I think we voted on the table. I think we did vote to table it, and they voted against, um, tabling it.
Time?
Thank you, Mayor.
You have to remember, too, the mayor could sign this right now, this lease, right now.
I do agree with, uh, some of the things that were said about the lease.
Councilman Richmond, one more time.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and then thank you, Mr. Baker, for cl- the point of clarity earlier. Uh, wanted to, uh, share with the resident, the citizens, uh, of Clarksville. Yes, I agree with some of the previous speakers that you've done an amazing job. I agree that it is a performing arts center, not a theater arts center, and so, Mayor, we...
Right, variety of, okay.
Okay, Councilperson Reed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Here we go.
Looks like we will, which is fine. Um...
Ward four.
Whenever I ran for this office, I ran against purchasing, uh, the Roxy. I like the Roxy. I'm all for the Roxy, as long as we don't own the Roxy.
I thought he was going to change his mind right here.
I don't believe it's a government function to own a theater. I don't think it's a very good time. If you look at theaters, how much business they've lost because of COVID. I was at a forum one time years ago, and someone asked, what is the role of government whenever it comes to buying big capital projects? And, and I think the answer is, it's, uh, um, the private sector. That's, that's, the private sector really shows the need for things. If something is really needed, the private sector comes forward and it makes things. That's, that's why I have an iPhone. Look at, look at the, the phone I have here, and look where it started. The phone was a thing that was on the wall, and you had to crank it up and talk to people.
How old is he?
I know, right? I thought the same.
Back in my day. Mr. Reed.
It has progressed to this.
He's older than he looks, though.
Projects like these, i- i- if, if something has not progressed, somehow we think if the government takes it over, it's going to work a lot better, and it's going to generate revenue.
He's, he, he hit a chord with me with that statement about government coming in to generate revenue. There's rarity in examples of that.
The government is never a good idea when it comes to anything. Any of us, we were just talking about this before we started, that, that are part of the VA, know that for a fact.
You know what you gotta do, and you know the tricks of the VA. To, to your point, Joe, it's like, let's take the government out of it. Let's just say this was between two parties, right?
Uh-huh.
If I was on the Roxy side, this is a great deal. You act like that. Show me the money. If I was the other person, I'd be like, I don't know if I can give you eight hundred grand and let you live for...
We are the other person.
I know, but I'm saying, take the government out of it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think we...
It was a, that's like me renting my house, and I'm, hey, give me a dollar.
Right. Because we are rooting for the Roxy.
Yeah, we want the Roxy, but it should be a fair deal as well for the taxpayers.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, in any case, uh, I'm going to be voting no, but I'll tell you one thing, I hope I'm completely wrong, and, uh, and it turns out to be a complete success.
And that's the same thing I said about the MPEC. Like, I, I will stand by that. Once, now, we're not done with the Roxy yet, because we, we have the rest of the plan to fight with now, but like, the MPEC is being built right now.
Yeah.
And the only thing that we can do at this point to not make that suck for the taxpayer is patronize it, so that it makes the revenue, so that it's not coming out of our tax money.
Right. I, I think, and I hope that the, the multi-purpose event center gets a great sponsorship and, and gets some great shows and creates some great revenues, and bring other businesses down here, absolutely. So I understand wanting this to also be successful, but done the right way.
I, I think some of the same events that could be held at the Roxy, though, could be held at the MPEC Center.
That's been brought up.
Well, here's the thing, though. Nobody even knows what the floor plans looks like of this said performance center. There's not even a blueprint.
We can't have the prints until we own the building.
Right. Like...
That's true, but nevermind.
Reynolds, you're recognized one more time.
Yes, I, I just, I don't want to go too deep into this, because it's going to be later this evening.
I have mixed feelings.
No, listen to the questions she be asking.
The Roxy is not...
No, I hear you. And I Karen. I, I, I'm sorry, uh, uh, Councilwoman Reynolds, but...
Uh, you already know, want to go with Councilperson for her.
Oh, okay. Yeah, 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 that's right. That's right. Just remember she put the babies in the cages downtown. Uh, okay. Oh, sorry.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Wasn't supposed to bring that up.
I don't want to know.
I got the pictures.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. She was on the show back when we were on, uh, one oh five five there, and, uh, ooh, did it not go good, babe?
In the red.
I said a curse word, I guess. MAGA.
Oh.
But hey, I, I, I heard her out in this entire meeting. She does make some good points.
Councilperson Knight, back to you.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate that, uh, we have two hundred and five thousand nine hundred and fifty, uh, people within, uh, Clarksville.
Isn't that something?
I'd like to know where he got that number.
That's not, that's, that's a projected, that's a projected, that's a projected number. I, uh, Councilman Knight, I'm sorry, Councilperson Knight, not Councilman Knight. Uh, should have said that was this, a projected number for the twenty twenty census, once it gets released, right?
I hadn't even heard that yet, so I was like, okay, cool.
Uh, Montgomery County, I believe, if, if it's Google, you'll leave it to, it's at, uh, two twenty.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Um, and...
Two hundred and twenty thousand.
Two hundred and twenty thousand, yeah.
The Roxy's going to generate revenue, and that is revenue that we can utilize...
I hate that he says that like he knows it.
Well, he keeps saying, he keeps saying this.
It's going to, it's go- no, we hope it does.
We hope it does, yeah.
Right. If it does create revenue, awesome, but it's got to.
But ask, ask, ask this question. Can the Roxy and MPECs have two events at the same time in the city of Clarksville?
Ooh, that's going to be fun. With people parking.
Pause. Turn his mic off, turn his mic off.
Can it happen, though?
But he does have a point, Joe, because you, you look at the, this, with, with the, the way the, the downtown area is, uh, like, constructed and every, I moved here two years ago, and, and when I moved here and I looked at the downtown, I was like, there is like absolutely no parking. If they have big events here...
Yes, I...
You have to park way far away.
I think they can have multiple events.
But I think they can, but how do they pull it off with parking?
Logistics, bill, well, with the multi-purpose event center, there is a parking lot already being constructed within that design, because that was already, uh, eight hundred plus parked, uh, parking spots, which ain't bad. Eight hundred plus parking garage, that's pretty good.
I think a portion of the problem when we look at the downtown area is that it involves one block of Franklin.
Yeah.
That's it. How about we push those limits out and have, if, uh, tell me one city you've been to.
Well, we would have to rezone, we'd have to rezone, so, so retail, where lawyers, and, and, and believe me, I love the lawyers down there.
That's why we have the thirty acres where Volcom Materials were.
No, I hear you, but that's been bought.
Yep, that's already in a.
Right, but prior to that.
How about back behind Madison, I've been back there.
Prior to being bought by Mr. Ham.
Well, our, our debate on multi-purpose event center being built somewhere is over.
Well, we know that, but what I, what I'm saying is, I just feel like.
I wanted it on Will Maru.
I'm not against the Roxy, I think is, is needed, but I'm also, I just feel like sometimes we have a duplicate of services when we got other things that need to be addressed.
Okay.
For example, and I know that someone's like, oh, he always bring that up, I do, because if you go over by exit one, there's nothing over there. There's no community centers, nothing.
What are you talking about, they got the Sonic over there?
Right, exactly.
I'm gonna throw something at you.
They got O'Connor's Irish Pub, I love.
You know, that's my ward there.
But if you look, but if you look next to O'Connor's, that, there's at all that open land right there, right next to O'Connor's, where they have the dirt parking lot for O'Connor's, but next to it, there's like.
Who land is it?
That's the thing.
Yeah.
And who gonna sell it? But no, there's land that can be bought, this is what.
It's for sale, too.
This is what Richard Garrett has been working on for a while and, uh, previously, uh, David Allen was working on trying to acquire the land to get, to build a community center, there's gotta be something, it has to be, it has to be dead on that side of town like ASAPP.
Well, that's being brought up also at these meetings.
Not brought up, though, it need to be executed, it's 2021.
He has a petition going around about that right now.
Yeah, but he.
All right, we'll, we'll circle back to that then.
Got you.
Okay.
And those roads.
Councilperson Allen. Councilperson Garrett, one more time.
Appreciate it, Mayor, I'd just like to maybe provide another perspective, you know, I've heard it.
This is interesting. What Councilman Garrett, word one's about to say is interesting.
You know, they, they operate, you know, self-sufficient, self-sustaining, they're not, you know, generates its own demand. When you kinda dig into it, though, a little bit, you see, uh, indications that that's not quite so. You know, from being on the brink of foreclosure, having to get grants from Aspire to bail them out, you see it through having to refinance the building several times to leverage capital, and this is pre-COVID. And so self-sustaining means to me that you don't need outside sources of funding to support what you do on the day-to-day. Your ticket sales and your product is what keeps you afloat, not relying on.
Government.
So, a local outlet slammed me and one of the things that they said in their slam was, the Roxy gonna be fine if you don't vote for it. And it was brought up three or four times last night, everybody was like, they've been saying this in public, but the thing is, we've been asking questions in email threads, feel free to request it, it's all public record. We've been asking questions for the last week, every single day, people just have pages and pages and they've been being answered to us. And he is exactly right, what we're seeing in that email traffic is not the same story that's being put out there by proponents on social media.
Right, uh, I mean, look at it, like, seriously, look at it, okay? You been in Clarksville for, for how long?
All my life.
All your life, babe.
Yeah.
How long, and again, and I have, have to preface that, I love the Roxy. How, how many times has it been just all profit? Where it didn't need reliance on government entity or donations?
The Great Escape is not even gonna reopen, bro.
The Great Escape, the movie theater, okay?
What if we put it there?
The Roxy?
You know what, that's a great idea.
It's not my idea.
Why couldn't you put the Roxy in the old movie theater?
That, that is not my idea, but someone else has brought that.
The old Carmichael?
Yeah.
That's been brought up?
It's an empty, it's an empty place and it's so much bigger than the Roxy.
Sound stages.
And they got sidewalks going in.
You can have multiple and extra parking, multiple stages, so you could do different events or for field trips.
That's a great idea. We should vote on it.
Here's another idea.
Plus, it's full of asbestos, too.
Somebody else brought that idea up.
And it's probably gonna be for sale for cheap.
What, what group uses that theater the most?
You know who owns that building right now, I believe?
The church?
The church, but also.
No, they don't own it.
No, not own it, but use it the most.
The church.
The church, but also who else in the community that, that you, uh, think about it, so I'm, I'm a big fan of Halloween time. They do the Rocky Horror Picture Show midnight showing, they were doing it at the Roxy.
Yeah.
But sometimes they do cast, they do live cast stuff with it, with Austin Peay students.
You can use the mass community picture building for that.
Yeah, why not use, like, with college, you know?
Well, because what, what was kept on being brought up, history, history, history of the building. I'm, I'm actually very shocked, Sheryl Crow's video, All I Wanna Do Is Have Some Fun, was not brought up in this argument, you know what I mean?
That was filmed.
Right. Did you guys know that, Ryan?
I saw it on Wikipedia yesterday.
Oh, my God, did you?
I answered it right on the, on the trivia, that's why I knew it, yeah.
Other entities to bail you out. Councilperson Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, I feel like we have gone off topic of the ordinance as it stays.
I actually gave a standing ovation at this point right here, okay? Because, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilperson Streetman's about to say, could we vote, please?
She does, she doesn't talk when she doesn't have something to say and I respect that.
Right.
In regard to the contract to purchase the Roxy Regional Theater, so I make a motion that we call for the question.
Call the question.
The only problem with, uh, with Council, uh, Councilperson Streetman is she is a St. Louis Cardinals fan and that sucks. Okay?
In a big way, too.
Yeah, like, that's, like, I will never vote for her ever because of that. Let's go Mets.
She walks on her toes.
Well, she wears those heels.
She wears really high heels.
She's like a track star to me.
Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Mr. Garrett, eleven yes, two no.
Eleven yes, two no.
Ordinance.
Who voted no?
Fifty-four.
Yours truly, next to you.
Thank you.
And Wallace Redd.
Wallace Redd, yeah.
I mean, we heard he was gonna say no anyways.
Yeah, about to be public.
He said, yeah, I'm gonna say no.
You know what else was interesting, too? So, also brought up, because then they were talking about, okay, now that we own the building, how are we gonna do this? How are we gonna run it, right?
Councilperson.
How we.
That's a.
Are we gonna say what he said, because it was great?
How are we gonna manage this, right?
Why, are you gonna buy a car and then test drive it?
So, then. Councilman Richmond, Von Del Richmond, okay?
Director of President Obama assigned this young.
Brings this up on how they're gonna run the Roxy, and again, I thought this was just about buying the building, not running a theater business. That, that's what I was under the impression of.
But we own the building now.
Right, but do, does that, and that's, again, do you own the Roxy business? I watched the entire meeting, I had to do the fast forwards. I mean, unbelievable, but now they're going into, how are they gonna run the Roxy?
Lady, uh, who's no longer with us, she passed in 2019, uh, her name is Miss Celia, I'm sorry, Mrs., um, Diane Rodriguez, and she.
And look at, look at the one, the one's like, what are you gonna do, man? The one's like, what are you gonna?
He was so sleepy at this point.
Yeah, 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 Councilman Garrett's like, what?
Was appointed by President Obama as the associate, she was the Associate Artistic Director at the Center.
You know who's the most tired, though? The sign language people. Okay?
They get to take breaks.
Oh, yeah, that's right, they take in and out.
I get a body double to come in.
They literally go to the side and they go, oh my God, hold on, like, they have to, like, stretch, like.
Her theater group in LA, and she was appointed by President Obama and confirmed by the US Senate to be a member of the National Council on the Arts.
The one's in the chair.
His face right there.
Uh, which also ran the advisory body of the National Endowment for the Arts, so this is our federal, uh, instit- entity that discusses inclusivity and, and diversity, uh, for, for our arts initiatives, uh, here as a nation, so please watch the screen.
So then, this video is getting played for the city council meeting.
And we've been there for like five hours at this point, four, over four hours.
Which, by the way, this is like, no joke, this is some propaganda stuff. Okay, I, I'm, you, you can owe and that's fine, but listen to, this is who should be running the Roxy is what I got out of why we're watching this video. From, and Von Del, come on the show again, let's go over it.
Better known as Chicanos.
I and my colleagues have used the word.
Decolonize to define both our goals.
And the obstacles in the way of achieving it.
I saw firsthand that the nonprofit model is built on the patronage of the wealthy.
I, I can't, I can't, I can't.
Is that why you labeled the city council propaganda?
Yes, that's exactly why I labeled it that.
He sure did.
Okay? And it's interesting, because, I mean, throughout this video of, of all of this, diverseness, which is fine, I don't get, look, look at the studio, I don't care about diversity, but, I mean, to mandate, this is who's gonna run the Roxy business now? That's what I'm all confused about, I thought it was just about owning a building and having a tenant pay for that building. And now it's gone all the way into how we're gonna shove art down your throats because we're government. So now I'm having an issue.
So basically, it's the art what they wanna show.
Bingo.
Yeah.
If.
That is problem, when you look at it that way, it's really problematic.
That's not, that's not art.
No.
And, and then, and then, yeah, Stacy says something right afterwards, right?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
And, and Von Del, I get, I, I get it, you know, be diverse, have diversity, but you don't shoehorn it in.
Yeah.
Councilperson Richmond, Councilperson, Councilperson Streetman, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, actually, you know, thinking about some of the things right there that we saw in that video, I wanna point out that the Roxy, they have, uh, some shows, quite a few shows where they've done where it's actually pay what you can. It's to enable people from the community to be able to come see it, it's not.
It's also a part of the reason why they don't do well.
Yeah. How much, how much do you wanna pay for a movie, I'll give you a quarter, okay, come on in.
They charge for the vagina monologue, monologue.
He mentioned that.
Yeah.
He mentioned that.
Who, who mentioned that?
Von Del brought up vagina monologues.
Did he say vagina?
Yes, he did.
Okay, he didn't say V-word monologue?
He said, he called it what it's called.
Vagina.
You leave that man alone.
I love Von Del, he comes on the show, of course.
I said, I said before we started, this is all, um, him being just emphatic, you know, he's just a compassionate person.
I know, and, and I love you, brother, you know that, you've been on multiple times, come on again, we'll talk about it.
You're not just the elite.
It's just, it's not his video that, that upsets me, it's government coming in to run this business that upsets me.
This is all exhausting, just because.
Imagine six hours of it?
Well, I, I watched it, I was.
Oh, did you? Oh, you pulled in.
It's, nevermind.
I feel like it's giving a, uh, bad representation to the type of people that go there. I, I go to Roxy shows, I love supporting the Roxy shows, definitely wouldn't consider myself one of the elite.
How do you feel about that?
I don't think she's part of the elite either.
Hundred thousand dollars a year, works for a bank, sits on the city council?
If I made a hundred thousand dollars a year.
A hundred thousand dollars ain't no money, though.
I, I wouldn't think I'm the lead either.
Yeah, that's twice what I make.
No, it's more than I make, too.
And I live good.
I'm saying, okay, let me, let me reframe that, reframe that. A hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, however, in 2021, if you want to start your own business, run a business, got two kids, or anything like, because you're not gonna qualify for it, no, there's nothing else.
Is that elite in Clarksville, though?
It, it can be, but it depends.
See, that's, that's a tough.
Do you have kids? What, what do your kids do for a living?
We call that sango.
It's just, it just depends.
Sango money?
That is sango, that's sango money right there.
But, but look, Ryan.
It's worse than work, you see the homes out there, that's sango money.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Look at the price of houses now.
Ryan, you, you work hard, okay, you do well for yourself, do you consider yourself elite?
No.
No.
Ah, I'm elite, I don't care.
I, I don't, so, I don't think money is a thing that makes you elite, I think it's, like, I, I, I don't care if you make two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or a million dollars. Like, to me, it's about who you are as a person and, and what you're doing for either your community or, you know, for the people around you.
Yeah, I, I love how this.
I think it has to do with power.
I, I think it has to do with, uh, with, uh, what's it called, uh, how we, uh, yeah, how we, uh.
Present ourselves.
Yep, absolutely.
I think a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, but if you have lived and traveled or tried to start a business or run a business, you will quickly find out that a hundred thousand.
For the record, I don't know how much money she actually makes a year.
You understand what I'm saying, Joe, it's like, get sued or get sick.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with Stacy, it has to do with, with, with that debate, but, uh, again, the, the, the Roxy is definitely not for elitists because if it was, the donations would be there where they wouldn't have to rely on, on government.
It would be bigger because when they have the vagina monologues, it sells, it sells at all the time.
He just wants to keep saying vagina.
He just wants to say it, yeah.
Vagina, 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 vagina. I'm gonna hear about that tomorrow.
You know my uncle calls it?
What?
Calls it the pussy play.
I'm not, I'm not saying that.
I didn't say it, I whispered it.
Oh, I'm not, I have a daughter.
Lord, Wayne says he's elite.
You go, you're going to the pussy play?
Oh, no.
It's about cats, it's about cats.
I'm not.
Oh, so cats, you were talking about the show Cats, okay.
Oh, man, but I, I'll tell you what, I, I mean, a- out of this, uh, I, I'm understanding that, uh, um, majority of the city council, okay, voted to purchase the building where the Roxy is, uh, that is, uh, uh, one hundred Franklin Street, I believe, is the address, right?
Something like that.
Yeah, something like that, right, right on the corner there, all right, so the city of Clarksville will soon own that building and then they are continually working on a deal, on a contract for the lease of the business and if they only make the Roxy pay a dollar a month for three years in exchange for.
I thought it was a dollar a year.
A dollar a year even, right? Because legally, they, right, if they pay a dollar a year, you have to let us dictate what goes on there.
Because government can't make profit off of it because it's paid for with city, um, tax dollars.
It's almost like.
And don't forget, if we pull it, if we buy it, we pull it off the tax rolls, so we're also not getting tax from it.
Part of it, yeah.
But at the same time as well, the city of Clarksville tax dollars will be paying the Roxy twenty thousand dollars a month, which is a hundred eighty thousand dollars a year. For how long?
This is why the, the, the youth of Clarksville need a community center down, excuse me, by exit one. If you could spend this type of money, not, not gonna, the, the Roxy, but we have to contribute to the youth because if you don't, they're gonna start calling through your window. This is what's gonna happen.
But that's why I was saying earlier.
And I'm not talking about just, you know what I'm saying, not just during the summer break, you, you understand?
But Coach, I, 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 I'm totally agree with you on that, too, because you and I, you know, both, both talked about this before, how we're both for the youth and how, how they need the development, that's why I was mentioning earlier about Austin Peay. Why not have them use the building as, as kind of a means for the youth, like, it's college students, but also they got younger kids coming in, they can, they can interact with these college students and use the Roxy as that building, as that community center until they get a new, a new community center built.
And on top of it, again, there's no blueprint, blueprint plans, there's no vision board, there is no, and, and I, I like when, uh, when Karen, uh, Congresswoman, Congressman Reynolds, Congressman Reynolds said, uh, there is no, uh, one-year, three-year, five-year plan. And, and that makes great sense to me.
My vision board at this point is going to be to make the Roxy, uh, school, an academy, kinda like the STEM academies that we have, um, and I think that it needs to be, um, so we can pull, so we can pull funding for, um, from federal and we can get the APSU in on it, we can get the county in on it, I mean, that's my newest idea that came from my sister, so.
But it might be too late. So you. It might be, unfortunately.
This is where I feel like we, it. We, I think we jumped so fast because, just think, if we're gonna commit a million dollars to the Roxy, suppose the things that we wanna do at the Roxy can be done at the Impact Center?
That's been brought up, yeah.
I hear you, but again, we're talking city, county.
I understand, but you think the county gonna not let us have an event in, they gotta fill that building?
Well, what are they gonna do, raise a wheel tax?
So they wanna consolidate, but they can't work together?
Well, first of all, two things, definitely gonna happen, uh, the county mayor and the city mayor are gonna work together, they're gonna make something happen.
They will.
They don't do nothing else.
Yeah.
Even if they don't agree, they will come to a.
They do have that, right, they do that, the relationship.
Mayor Duretta is, is not gonna just leave, uh, Mayor Pitts out and not communicate and vice versa, that's not gonna happen. Even if they have a disagreement, they're gonna come to a conclusion.
Here's one thing that they, nobody brought up, and I was actually, I, I wouldn't say upset, but I was surprised that it wasn't brought up. What are they gonna do about all of the ghosts in the Roxy building?
Are you gonna move them over to the old city hall building?
Are they going to be a part of the Performing Arts Center?
Yeah.
That place is haunted.
It's history.
It, it's haunted, though. It's haunted. All right, let's move forward, we gotta, we gotta move forward. Who knows, we don't know, we don't.
It's a landmark, so there are some stipulations, but no, we have no idea what's going on with it.
There's no blueprint, even after everyone said yes.
Which is why I'm saying it ain't over yet.
So Joe, would you vote it no or yes or no for that?
I would've went with the approach, and my vote, when I do run for Ward 12 and win, okay?
You don't even live in Ward 12.
I'm moving, I'm moving.
Uh, you wouldn't be the first that did not run against me.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's what you do, that's politics.
But, uh, but, but nonetheless.
I'll run your election.
I would've really joined the team of, let's talk about this lease first, before we actually vote on buying this building, so.
That's just because you're new, that's just because you're new, this has already been in the works for ten years.
I heard that and I saw that, right?
I'm not salty.
I heard that and saw that, and, and yeah, to, to actually.
Would you commit a million dollars to something that you don't have all the answers you need?
No, if, if, I would not commit a million dollars to something I don't have a blueprint for.
Yeah.
That's all.
You have to pass it before you get the blueprint, Joe.
No, no, I'm a construction guy, Team Still Local 14, carpeting the local 15 back in the day.
There it is.
When he was sixteen.
He's always that old.
No way, I mean, I'm telling you.
I'm a pro-union guy, come on.
Um, no, not, not after they told me how to vote, okay? Then we had problems, right?
Now I'm not pro-.
Yeah, you voted for this guy, that guy wants illegal immigration, I'm gonna lose my job, I mean. But nonetheless, I mean, yeah, you, if you have a construction site, you have a blueprint first before the buyer comes in and buys the land.
Or, like you said, or was discussed, you gotta have some type of operating agreement, like, what, what are you gonna do and how you gonna do it?
Yeah.
All right, all right, all right, anyone else, we, we gotta move forward, we gotta move forward. All right, all right, all right. Anyone else, we gotta move forward. We gotta move forward. It it's not depressing. It it's actually.
I have that effect on people.
I I think it it's a very fair conversation that you can't have over social media.
Agreed.
Because I I I was reading the comments a lot of last night and into this morning. And the nonsense of going back and forth, it's stalemate. It's stalemate. We're here, we can have.
It's like, we can't, no one can get an answer on anything nowadays. Like, no one can agree to disagree. No one can come to a solution. It's like, we're. This whole world has become a stalemate all of a sudden in the last two years. I don't know what happened.
I like what Ryan said about the the Carmichael Theater.
Yeah.
Well, and I do have something to say, because I've been listening and I really don't.
Sorry, sorry, we got you in the corner today, but.
But, so.
It's the black guy.
It is, it's starting to hurt pretty bad, but.
I'm sorry.
So I don't, I mean, I'm all for the Roxy. I was born and raised here and I remember taking field trips there and watching plays, you know, that kind of thing. So I don't wanna see the Roxy go away. However, I am in business and I like to make money just like everybody else.